Okay, so I believe his agenda indicated that we should review the bills. With an eye to approval.
Did I miss something? Was there another, another folder? I just had, this is Friday's thing, was that?
Um, yes, it's inside there, inside that, the November folder, which was in the meeting link.
Okay.
So was that, was that put in? In time for Friday, Joy?
Yes, yes, it was.
So Jerry should. Well, there's quite, you know, there's quite a bit. So did anybody have any questions on that as we look through?
There's a couple of, a couple of big items there. Of course, the insurance bill came due, so that is a pretty good amount to the monthly bills. We also had some more furnace, some more boiler repairs on the bills.
Lansingburg or downtown?
What's that?
Was that Lansingburg or downtown?
I believe that's the older one from downtown. We still face one from Lansingburg.
Okay.
Lansingburg is gonna be up there as well. We had some difficulty getting it done, but.
And I see we have Roche Brothers.
Yeah, that's, the front door has been giving us an issue and then, one day, actually, I was in a meeting with Kirsten in the building, we were closed at the time. And somebody, you know, if this is a Monday, somebody wanted to get in and they kept, you know, wrenching the door to the point where, you know, it's broke. This is the two things that hold the door closed, the secondary door. So yeah, it cost a bit to get that repaired. At least the door doesn't stick anymore.
Ah, okay.
Well, that's a good thing.
Now pest control, is that a routine thing that gets done?
Yes, that's, that's the dog. We, a couple of times here, we have to check for bed bugs.
Okay.
Have we had a bed bug issue in the past?
What's that?
Have we had a bed bug issue in the past?
Um, yeah, we have in return material. We've spotted it all. And we have a procedure, if they do spot them, the book goes into plastic containers and is discarded. That's happened a couple of times, but like I said, we, since we've had the dog come in, they haven't detected any other infestations anywhere. Libraries have suffered that off and on. Huge infestation, so we want to.
Yeah, um, this is just a tangential aside, but when I was working at New York City Ballet, we had an infestation in the theater, which similarly problematic, given the number of like cushioned velvet seats in the building. So I appreciate your diligence.
Yeah, once it, once it happens, it's a big problem.
Yes.
So what kind of dog is it?
What's that?
What kind of dog is used for that service?
Um, they had a beagle. But the beagles retired and now they had, I couldn't identify, it's a little brown dog. It didn't look like he had had papers, but he can smell bed bugs, so that's all they need.
Interesting.
He smells them, they don't jump on him and he takes them away. Is that it? I mean, what, what's the process?
They just go through the entire building.
So he sniffs them out where they are?
Downstairs, all through the stacks, everywhere.
Now, the, the insurance bill, that's, isn't that fairly typical? It seems to me we've been having bills like about that much.
Yes, that's normally on there.
Anybody have any questions?
No, you, you asked the questions I would have asked.
Does someone want to move to approve, recommendation of approving the bills to the, to the board?
I'll do that.
Pardon?
I can do that.
I can second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion's carried unanimously, I believe. Okay, next. The finance, the financial statement?
Yeah, the financial statement is the income portion is a little bit of behind of where we are supposed to be, but that's going to be the case right throughout the year. Partly due to the CDTA bus passes that were not, we hadn't done for about five months. So that income was way down. Other income areas are down basically and some of the grant like lines which are often have corresponding programs. So even though your income is down, your expenses are also way down. So the difference is you're, you're ahead about 100,000 right now, at the end of October. One thing to, to look at too is, is again, the Detroit tax levy. And I put this on my report, we received another 3,400 in November from that. You know, bringing a total up to 1,173 or so, 174. So we wind up right now as we sit here being only about 4,000 short of a full tax levy income or the full budgeted amount. I guess, I don't know, anybody got questions on the income statement?
I see that there's a fair amount coming in on the copier. 894 this month?
Yeah, oh, this month, yeah. That's not bad.
No? Considering how long, how little we've been open to.
Right. One thing too, and I, the fines and fees are of course way down because of the fact that we went fine free in February, but at the same time, the system, and I put this in my director's report too, the system hasn't been running the bills. Mainly because many libraries were closed. Running the, the bills is an all or nothing situation. Every library gets them. And then they, they, they impact every patron record that's involved. So they can't pick and choose, some of the libraries, some of the smaller libraries didn't want bills sent out for a while. We just went over that again today. I think they're gonna, they're gonna send those bills out. And this loss involves, you know, lost or damaged materials primarily.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
Paul, do you know when they're gonna start sending out those bills?
I'm sorry, what?
You know when they're going to start sending out bills?
Um, they're surveying all the libraries right now. I got a feeling we're gonna start soon. I think, you know, he's just trying to get a feel if anybody says, oh no, don't do it, don't do it, you know, kind of thing. We're very cooperative out there, you know. So hopefully within a week or so.
Um, back to the tax levy, do, do we anticipate any more payments or are we planning on that kind of, I think, what did you say, like a $4,000 shortage?
Yeah, we, we will, I'm pretty sure we'll receive that before the end of the year. So we'll probably be at the full budgeted amount. We're going to, we know we're going to be short LLSA, which is what the Library Services aid, it's, we know that's gonna be short 20%.
Right.
And that, you know, that has some, some impact on us because we do kind of count on that, even though it's, it's gonna be about 3,000 less.
Okay.
But I think essentially, you know, the tax levy makes that up because we already budgeted a deficit in the tax levy of 10,000.
Right, right.
So that puts us, I think, in pretty good shape. I think, I think we'll finish the year in good shape.
Great.
One of our difficulties is that we can't borrow money. So we have, you know, where somebody else might be able to to do so, if the, if there's a delay in getting revenues, we can't. So Paul always works very hard to try and, and keep things well matched with the revenues that we expect. We tend to get big lump sums twice a year. So I think that when Bob says that we're in good financial shape, that that's what he's referring to. The fact that we keep within our budget and don't overspend, thanks to, to Paul's oversight. However, according to what Paul has said, we, our budget should be two or three times the size that it is for our size of city. Paul, and do you want to correct me on that? Did I?
Oh, no, it basically, for our size of a service area, which is, you know, 50,000 people. You know, we should be at least twice, maybe two and a half times what we have. Again, it shows, you know, the limitations on the resources that are available to us to provide that service. You know, we, we sometimes say, well, why aren't we doing what they're doing over in Gilderland and the answer is, you know, they have a, a lot larger per capita income than we do. But I think we do pretty well anyway.
Right, it's difficult because, you know, according to the 2010 census, about 25% of our, of the population of the city is below poverty level. So that means you have fewer people to support the financing of the services that are in greater need because we have such a large number of people who can't afford to pay for those themselves. We were very fortunate this year to have gotten a grant from the McCarthy Foundation to get hotspots, laptops with hotspots. There were some very lucky people who happened to have those out when COVID hit, so they got to keep them much longer than they anticipated. But those are very popular. They tend to go out as soon as, as they're, you know, ready to go out. They tend to be taken out again. Do you have any expectation, Paul, of, of getting more of those?
Yes, we actually, we, we did put in an order for some more to replace some of the ones that are missing. It's been, you know, not only are they popular here, but they're popular everywhere. It's been difficult actually to reorder, they're just not available. So we waited, I don't know, we waited a month or so before they became available again.
There's probably a big demand for computers with people staying at home and.
Yeah, I mean, we have, you know, I hear different figures, but, you know, they, they talk about there's 30% of the people in town in, in our district that don't have access to the internet or don't have the equipment or, or, you know, just don't, aren't able to, to get into. So I think it's a great service. I think the fact too, that we're open and offering, you know, in-house computer use will kind of essential in our particular case. I know some libraries say, okay, no computer use in the building. But their constituents are much more logged in at home.
Did you order just to replace or did you order to increase the number, Paul?
We ordered, how do we do that, Joy?
We ordered to replace.
No, no, to replace? Paul said you ordered to replace the missing ones?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, replace, not a place, okay.
Right, right, yep. We had to, yep, some of them didn't come back, so we had to order replacement.
So how many do we have in total?
We usually, I believe we have 20. And then, off the top of my head, I can't remember how many Lansingburg has, I think maybe 10. But we had to replace the few that just didn't come back.
Yeah, we can easily double that if we need, you know, and still get the kind of use that we're getting.
So the ones that didn't come back, are they just ones that didn't get returned or got damaged or?
Basically didn't get returned, we do shut them off, I mean, they're not, you know, worth anything. Couple of them came back. We're still hopeful, we've contacted people. Some people don't live there anymore. So it's been kinda, well, I think, you know, the pandemic has kind of disrupted a lot of this too. But we have tried to get a call to people and, as I say, they're kind of useless because we turn them off.
So we, you know, we've essentially done the business of the finance committee. So if people have, have find, general financial questions or wanted to explore any, any more of, we could continue to do so until the time for the board meeting, or we can take a break. I just thought that it would be an opportunity, especially for the new board members, to discuss some of these, these issues that we may not have mentioned previously. What, what's people's preference?
I mean, I have questions, but also if everybody else wants a break, I can totally respect that too.
Shall we let?
I just found all the, I found this stuff on my phone. What is the Broder company?
Is a book jobber?
It's what?
It's a book jobber. Book jobbers or jobbers in general get and store materials from all the publishers. And then we order directly from Broder rather than going to all the publishers.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
The large unexpected windfall that we had received as a result of someone's estate planning, I'm so sorry, I forgot their name. Where did, where do we put that? Like, just into like a big savings account?
That's something the board will, will wrestle with, but initially we'll put that in our investment account. We receive the check, we'll put it in the investment account. Being a government entity, we have to keep the investment account and the operating account together in order to maintain less than 250,000 in the operating account. So that will go in there and then the board needs to, you know, make decisions about. It's been suggested that we establish a new reserve account.
I was wondering.
Put some of the money into the construction account and then some of it into reserve account. But again, that's gonna be a board decision and probably something the finance committee will wrestle with first.
Yeah, I guess that was just my thinking, because I know that in the special meeting last week, Marie, you were talking about the reserve and I was kind of wondering last week if that could be part of the reserve, but it sounds like, yes.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have what's, an account designated as just a reserve account. What we have is the undesignated construction account where we have been, you know, putting extra funds in because we always have a, a matching obligation for all the construction agreements. So we need to be able to match those in order to go forward. But one thing that, you know, at least in my opinion, we've always needed is some kind of a reserve account. Just to hate it.
Agreed.
So Paul, I thought I saw 200,000 go into the investment account. So that wasn't the bequest?
No.
Maybe, maybe I'm remembering incorrectly.
It, well, it's, there's, I don't, I forgot how much is, we, we transfer from the investment account to the operating account when, when we need money. When it's appropriate, I, I've got the accounts sitting here. The investment. Yeah, that's because, you know, we get that big payment from the city, the second big payment. It pushes our operating account over the limit, so we, we put 200,000 into the investment account.
Okay, so, but wouldn't we have gotten that earlier than October? Or did we get it earlier, it went into the operating account and then went into the investment account?
Yeah, yeah, it goes, we, we have to put it somewhere, we put it in the operating account and then move it over to the investment account. Again, like I said, we moved those back and forth from those two accounts. The investment account traditionally is basically just part of the operating account. It's just a matter of, you know, you need to have an investment account to keep less than 250,000.
I don't know whether everybody knows that the reason for that is that if the money in a bank account isn't insured over $250,000. So apparently by putting it into an investment account, then it will be covered.
Yep. Yeah, this is, you know, when the bank sets itself as a government agency, that's the requirement is that we also set up an investment account at the same time.
Any other questions? We're getting close to 5:30. Okay, do people want to take a two-minute break?
I gotta get more water.
Okay, see you back in a couple of minutes. Is there any public comment? I guess not. So the second item on the agenda is the treasurer's report and approval of expenditures. The finance committee looked at the the financial statement. There was no indication that there were any questions about it. And they also recommended approval of the expenditures. So can I move for that or would somebody like to move? If there are no questions from the board?
Yes, if it's someone who's not on the committee now, especially if Bob's not here. Okay, and I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? So approval is unanimously approved or by the board? Next, we have the consent agenda. Does anyone want to see something come off the consent agenda onto the regular meeting?
If I may, I'd like to make a few comments about the RFP for the historic structures report. Little update on that. If I can do that as a separate piece, I'd be happy to do that as a separate piece or if it, I don't know if it means we need to, I don't, I don't know that we need to withdraw the buildings report from the consent agenda, if I may add this other piece on at a later time.
Okay, let's move it from the consent agenda onto the regular agenda as far as the building committee report goes.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, just to be clear, so we do, we had a direct, we have a director's report, we, there is, was there not a U, Oprah Hudson report this time?
There is. There is. It's in, it's in the the folder.
Okay, it's, it's the one that's called, it's not called, it's the like side-by-side comparison?
No, it's the UHLS report.
See that, I looked for it and I did not see it.
Maybe if you sort by recency, I think it was a, a fairly recent addition. Did you find it?
No, but I'm not gonna hold up meeting looking for it, I just wanted to make sure. I know there usually is, I, and I just thought it strange that it wasn't, so it was just mine.
Michelle, the file name is TPL November 2020.
It's the 14th page of the.
Ah, got it. I got it, I was looking, I was looking for the, I was looking for UHLS first, then was, and it was the fourth thing. Thanks, Bray, thanks, everybody. Okay, got it.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Or I'm sorry, does someone want to move to, or, yes, make a motion? Does someone want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Kirsten, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously? Motion carries unanimously? Kirsten, since we moved the building committee report off the onto the regular agenda, do you want to go ahead and report on that now?
If I may, that'd be very kind, thank you. But I just wanted to add to the, as previously reported, that we have been working on an RFP for getting professional services for a historic building report, historic structures report for the main branch of the downtown library, the public library. And, you know, in a nutshell, it's several pages long, but in a nutshell, there are several tasks that we're asking to do. Those tasks include, you know, evaluating the current condition of the exterior interior of the building to conduct forensic investigations and analysis of the building, which may actually mean opening up parts of the existing construction to understand it better, send materials out for testing, look at concealed locations at some places to understand how the building is functioning from a from a physical standpoint, to evaluate the existing HVAC systems in the building. Obviously, the building has had a lot of changes over the years in HVAC systems. Are they working together? Are they working at all? So that's a piece of it. And then to, based on those investigations, to also generate a prioritized general cost estimate, itemized cost estimate, so we can evaluate what projected costs might be to address the conditions that they find and to help prioritize some of those things that they're seeing. What's, I'll say then, the next generation passed a typical historic structures report then is we're also asking the firm to coordinate with library staff, library administration, and the board of trustees to study the existing physical infrastructure and functional program potential and existing conditions and potential for how library functions functionally in that building and to assess what trends are, what the interests of the board and the administration and the staff are to address those concerns, to do in the future, and then how the building can accommodate that. And then also to develop costs and for what those changes might be. So it's a very high level view of the building from a physical standpoint as well as a functional standpoint and come forward with some recommendations on all those topics. We've put together a timeline for this here, I know we've been waiting for quite a while for SHPO to complete their review of grant applications and what requirements they might have for that process. I think we've finally gotten through that piece with SHPO. So a little further behind than we wanted to be, but the intention is to issue an RFP hopefully in the next week or so. Week or so, having reviewed by, with Paul and Marie. And they receive proposals by the middle of December with interviews to follow after that. And then a recommendation from the committee to, and the board to make a recommendation to award a contract then in the middle of January, which would be reviewed here with this committee, with the board for authorization to do that.
Paul, have we heard anything further from, from SHPO?
Nothing, nothing other than that we can go ahead with the RFP.
Okay, so we can, terrific.
That's what they said. I think if I could comment a minute, the RFP is quite thorough. And I'm hoping that it's not too thorough, you know, in terms of the pricing. You know, it looked as if, if I saw that, it it may trigger a higher price than, you know, our initial inquiries, but awful lot involved.
It's, it's a detailed study and, yes, right.
The investigative work and the forensic work that, you know, were requested.
Well, I think the investigative work was always something that was seen as being part of it, particularly to determine whether there are changes that are ongoing versus whether things were really stable, even if there had been signs. For those people who are new to the board, there's been a lot of concern on the south side of the building. Whether there's been damage and whether there continues to be damage occurring because of the tunnel and all the traffic that goes through there.
And the effect of acid rain on the limestone and marble exterior, marble exterior and how it's holding up or we've seen some dramatic changes in the not so distant past, so is that something that's isolated conditions or is it something that's affecting larger portions of the building?
A lot of questions on, you know, on the west side as well, we're not really clear on the conditions. And there's a lot of questions on the cornice work and, you know, a lot of the ornamental work.
We had, we're projecting, as this RFP would require a final report by the end of August. There was talk about whether we wanted to get a initial report or a partial report, an assessment. And whether we wanted to add that in or not, so if there's, I know there's some deadlines we need for grants and so some timelines. There are many needs, of course, this building only being one of them, and we also have to think about things that are coming up at Lansingberg and any requirements that might be coming up there as well, so if there's a desire for an initial assessment, we could request an initial report for the end of June, for instance, if that's something that is desired or not, or we could just wait until the final report comes out in August, so that's a question mark at this point. Open to certainly hearing other people's thoughts.
Any further questions?
I have one for Kirsten. Kirsten, I have, I have a question for you. And the, and the process. Oh, this all pretty much started when we had someone from SHPO come to talk to the board before I know almost everybody on the board's time. And one of the things that came up was anecdotal observations of damage versus some longitudinal, say forensic evidence of damage, for example, are the cracks by the staircase really increasing or not? Which would take some time to gauge possibly. Will the RFP and this process take that into account?
That's a very fair question. I think that the requirement for forensic investigations would require the need to do that sort of investigation. Whether the timeline is long enough, that's a good question, and I think it's something we need to ask the proposers. We originally had projected a one-year duration for this investigation. And now it's, they have been reduced to eight months. So I think that's a valid question, whether that needs to be, whether that investigation needs to be done, can be done in that timeframe, or whether it needs to be extended. I don't know the answer to that, it's a technical question, and I think we'd want to defer to our proposers, and that might be just a question we should ask during the RFP process. And maybe we need to amend this here to extend that timeline, so thank you, that's an excellent question.
Anybody else? That's excellent news about being able, that we have gotten approval, we've waited so long. We originally got the, the grant award in December of last year, so that's how long we've been waiting for, just to get the approval to move ahead. Okay, anything else, Kirsten?
That's, that's it, oh, I'm working on with Paul to gather materials together to install the lockbox on the outside of the building there, so I'm, I'm sorry, I haven't finished that yet, that's in my court. But that's it.
Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda is the 2021 operating budget, I see that Bob has joined us. Bob, do you want to speak to the recommendations of the finance committee on that? You're muted. We can't hear you, Bob, you're muted. Joy, can you?
Hey, I'm sorry, I had things on my, on my computer, I had to get out of the way so I could free up my, and unmute it. Yes, we had a special finance meeting to review the 2021 budget. And we compared it with the 20 and took all of the changes. And Paul spent a good deal of time educating everybody and we discussed the changes. We recommend to the board that we accept the 2021 budget as has been both voted upon and discussed in our special finance meeting. And the total expenses for 2021 will be 192,800. The total.
You mean 1 million?
This document is in in the, in the materials that Joy sent out, and our total budget for 2021 will be 1,377,853, which is a 1%, 1% increase. We recommend that the board approve the budget. Are there any questions? I would make a recommendation that we approve the budget.
Okay, you make the motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the 2021 budget as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Hi.
Any abstentions? Any no votes? I vote no. So six in favor, one against, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the selection of the auditor.
Yes, we, we did an RFP, we sent it out in September, it was returnable August 9th. And we had only one company respond. On the day of closure on the 9th, I called the Bonadillo Company because they had not responded one way or the other, most of those agencies that we sent out to did indicate that they wouldn't be responding, with the exception of UHY, and we met with them and reviewed their finding. Bonadillo said that they did not submit because they want a three-year contract, they don't respond to one year often. So I said to them that another company had asked the same thing and we allowed them to submit. We gave them permission to submit a three-year bid, they did not submit it. And they said, well, if we could have a week, we would submit a three-year bid, so they did submit it. We then met with Bonadillo and screened their their submission. Both companies had very thorough proposals, very impressive, they both had deep experience, have worked with libraries, both of them. And there was a price difference, so in our discussion, our thinking was that we would get a fine job from Bonadillo and we selected them, and the price difference was $5,000, $15,000 versus 10. We had interesting favorable discussions with both companies that were very impressive. So our recommendation is to select the auditor, the Bonadillo Group. And go forward that, with that, for their auditing of our 2020 finances. And a three-year contract for $10,000. Jerry, in her questioning, made clear there would be an out opportunity for us should we not want to pursue the three years. Jerry decided. Any questions before I make, or I make the motion, you can have any questions, and I move that we select Bonadillo and Company as our auditor for 2020.
Is there a second?
Can I ask that question first?
Well, could, could we, no, could we get the second since Bob's made the motion? Bob, is there a second for the motion? I second the motion, okay, feel free to ask your questions, Brianna.
I'm just, I'm hearing 10,000 versus 15,000 between the two different companies and a difference of a third feels like a huge variation for the same service, is there any sort of exploit, like do we understand why it's so much cheaper with Bonadillo? Should we be concerned that it's that much cheaper with Bonadillo?
No, I don't have an explanation for it, but the UHY was a group that I identified to be added to our targeted groups when we did the RFP. I contacted them and the lead person, VP, said to me, well, we do larger organizations such as Russell Sage Nextdoor, our prices are high. I think what you'll find if you get a proposal from us, there'll be sticker shock. We do charge higher than other, other companies. And at that time, we were, we had no response, and so I encouraged his response, and they did give a very fine response, but right from the beginning, their warning to me was that their fees are higher than others. And I think the general discussion was of concern around the fee unless something demonstrable could be identified that would be worth a much higher fee, and we came to the conclusion that Bonadillo was a very good company, that we'd get the same level of service, and that's why we voted them, I don't, I couldn't explain why, but he said, you know, they do larger companies and he was, he would submit, but he wasn't going to alter his, his prices. When we accepted a three-year contract from, a three-year proposal from Bonadillo, I recontacted, recontacted UHY, and I said that we're accepting a three-year contract from another company. If you would like to submit a three-year contract and consider lowering your prices, we would enjoy getting that. And he said, no, no, thank you. So they stuck to their 15 and that's why we're recommending Bonadillo.
Okay, okay.
Also, there you, I don't remember, UHY also had been the auditor for UHLS, the Upper Hudson Library System, and Bob had talked to the director to get a reference, and also Bonadillo. And also Bonadillo has been the auditor for the city and has had experience with them. And Bob, you had experience with them as when you were on City Council. Is that correct?
Yes, and in Rochester, too. They're very, very big company. They do a lot in healthcare. They do a lot in government. And what's if they if if a agency they're working with needs a consultation, they have a separate group that does consultation, which makes their independent audits independent.
So they have a good reputation.
Very good.
As well.
The other thing was that we didn't. We don't have to pay. If we call them up with questions, they will be there to answer questions without being on the clock, without charging, being on the meter, where it sounded like the other group or anything you called about, there was there would be charges. So it sounded more like there we would get more for our money. But they also sounded very confident. I didn't see a great difference between what they were offering. UHY was offering for the price. For the for the higher pricing.
And not to bog down the the discussion tonight. There was a third group that we had heard from at a point who also came up with a $10,000 fee. So that seems to possibly be the going rate now. And they're also very well established. This other firm was a very well established Upper Hudson and other library auditor. So the 10 10K seems to be across the boards or getting to become across the boards. And UHY is known as being incredibly, incredibly expensive.
Okay, thanks. That helps ease my mind. Thanks.
I will also, by the way, say that while I will vote yes on this choice. I would like for future reference, and it will be far future because if we don't pick another auditor for three years, because the the terms of our contract will be one year, but three, three versions of a one-year contract to up to five years, according to our bylaws. I would think it would be highly suggested on my part to streamline, rehash the choosing of the auditor process, you know, to define it a little bit better about how many bids of, you know, that the I think the whole process should be looked at and reevaluated and reconstituted and then articulated.
So I'm not sure that I understand what your concerns are that you would.
Well, I think.
Want addressed. I just, you know.
Again, for future again, for future reference, I think there were glitches in in the process. For example, getting out the RFP, dating it. I think we heard from another library that there might be a different way of doing it, too, that could ease the process choice, you know, the process and the choices. Instead of starting with an RFP, they started with a conversation. I'm pretty sure I shared this with, if not just, it may have just shared it with the Finance Committee. But there are other ways of doing that. So it's looking at that. It's looking at how many responses we want to get, how far we're going to get so that we're not we don't ever put ourselves in a corner, you know. Again, I just think there's some ways of looking at the process that will also having making sure there's always a clause that says, you know, there's an out clause in any contract we make instead of just thinking about it. Yeah, there might be things that we want to make sure are in our process that's articulated.
I don't think anybody would disagree with you that we would prefer to see the process start earlier, you know, than it did this time. So but it's helpful to have you clarify what things you think need to be addressed. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
I would just say in response to Evelyn's comments that after we do the audit, I would entertain if we're very satisfied with it reconsidering our policy. Our policy calls for a full independent audit. And there's a more limited opportunity, but we'd have to change our policy first. So we'll consider that. But let's let's move to this issue, which is hire Bonadillo as our auditor and get our audit done this year, this year's audit done by them and next year likely. We'll see. So I would make a motion that we select Bonadillo and Company as our auditor for 2020.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. If there are no more questions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion to select Bonadillo as our auditor?
Hi.
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 Any against? Any nays? The motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is Carol, who I think is has been waiting patiently. Carol Roberts is head of the Young People's Services for the library.
Yeah, I just want to say that I asked Carol to be our victim tonight. But Carol has been head of the YPS Department for 14 years. Something like that.
Yeah, a long time.
Long time. Long suffering. So she can tell you pretty much what goes on in there. Carol?
Okay, everybody hear me all right?
Yes, do you know that we have two new board members since the last time we met with you, Carol?
I do. Nice to meet you both.
Jerry DeSev and Brianna Clark.
Welcome. So I personally feel that I have the best job at the library because I get to work with kids. And I'll tell you a little bit about what we do in the Young People's Department. We have ways. Basically, there's there's three main ways that we get to connect with kids and parents. And that's through materials, programming, and outreach. And in terms of programming, we have a lot of things that we do. It's been a little challenging in the current environment since March. But we're finding new ways to try to connect with our patrons. And some of the things that we used to do, maybe I should talk about that first. But, you know, we had a lot of in-person programs. And probably the most important thing that we do is storytime because early literacy research is finding more and more how important it is to get kids early. And and the wonderful thing about that is is when you reach people when they're young, they become lovers of the library and they become lifetime library users. And I've been doing this long enough that kids that I first gave storytime to are now coming in and they're they're adults now. And pretty soon they'll be bringing in their own children, which is amazing because it doesn't seem like it's been that long. But time does fly when you enjoy what you're doing. And I love what I'm doing. So some of the programs that we've done over the years, we have things like, and we still do, are things like 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, which, you know, kids get rewards for reading. And we try to get them in early, as soon as they're born even. And another thing that we do is we continue that into summer reading. This year was very challenging, but we still managed to have a summer reading program. And instead of doing in the summertime, we mostly do in-person programs. But what we did instead was we came up with take and make kits. And so those are things that parents could come and pick up at the library and take home and to enjoy doing with their kids. And we did have some kids actually finish the summer reading program, which is awesome. But we've got we've had a lot of programs. We have a reading dog. And I don't know if you've seen any of the storytime videos that I've done. But I also have my own dog appearing in those. And probably she'll be doing that for the foreseeable future. We also have another way that we connect with kids, obviously, is through books and selecting materials and doing what we call Reader's Advisory, which is basically helping kids find books that are of interest to them. And this can always this can often be challenging. We have kids that we call, they call or can be labeled as reluctant readers. And really, I think it's just kids that need to find what works for them. And another way that we we do our job is through outreach. And one of the things that we've done is I've teamed up with the creator of an organization called Teach My Kid to Read. And this organization is focused on helping kids with dyslexia. And so last month was National Dyslexia Awareness Month. So normally, what we do is we have and we have a book display and giveaways and raffles and things like that. But this year I made a book display, but I just I had to post it on Facebook. And right now, that's that's a large way. That's probably the main way we have of connecting with people because even though we are getting some people that come into the library, a lot of people are still reluctant to do that. And so we keep trying to come up with ways to to bridge that that gap. And, you know, it's an ongoing it's an ongoing challenge. But I think that we're able to meet that. So what else can I tell you? We have partnerships with local organizations. I've teamed up with the Music Hall to provide storytimes in the park. I was Spider-Man a couple of years ago, which was interesting and probably the most fun. And this is this is what I love about my job. I was a teacher before I became a librarian. And I have to say that being a kid's librarian is like being a teacher, but with none of the bad stuff. You don't have to correct papers. And there's no discipline involved. It's just the sheer joy of turning kids on to reading. And really, what could be more fun than that? I could go on and on talking about my job, but I know you have a lot still to talk about. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
One of my favorite programs is. I'm sorry, Jerry.
I was asking how you do storytime. You make. That's okay. I don't know if you hear me. You make videos of the storytime?
Well, what I do, yes, I have a I have an intro that I do with my dog usually. And then I just show and make a video of the book as I'm reading it. So the kids really get to see the text rather than me holding the book. Because really, what we're trying to do is get them hooked on on words and to make the connection that words have sound and meaning. I mean, the letters have sounds which make up words. And they can't really do that if they can't if they can't actually see it. And this is also challenging because for the younger children, because kids are already, you know, they're on they're online a lot now, having to learn remotely. So, you know, we're we're trying to sort of balance that between what what's best for them and and just trying to get our faces out there so they remember that the library is there.
How the video shows the written word? The video shows the pages of the book rather than you reading it? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I'll have to go online and find some of these videos.
It's on our Facebook page. And also, if you just look at your video, it's also on our YouTube channel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carol, I have a question. Um, I know your department has had an ongoing program for homeschoolers because I give out your brochure a lot to interested parties and parents. During, you know, the downtime for students, did you see any increased utilization by parents and our kids, you know, dealing with homeschooling through school shutdowns?
Yes. I have parents coming in who, I mean, there's two different things. Well, first of all, homeschooling, we're working right now. We're working on a homeschool schooling page for the website. So we're just starting to build that now. But there's the two things to realize are that there's there's homeschooling. And then there's remote learning. And those two things are very different. But I will say that I am seeing more parents coming in and saying, we're not just doing remote learning. I'm going to homeschool my kids because, you know, they they don't feel that they want to send them to the to the physical building, you know, due to COVID. So I am seeing more I am seeing more parents doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. What are some of the weaknesses that you find in being able to achieve what you want in your program, both with COVID and even before COVID?
Um, well, physically, the the building is challenging because the space is is small. We could use twice the space in the children's area. And also, it would be good to have something where there's a line of sight. I also don't like that we're right next to the front door. Just because I have had kids rush out and parents go chasing after them. But, you know, we try to make the best that the best. We try to do the best job we can with the building that we have. But it is challenging in that way. Another thing that that's hard, too, is I would say, just even physical comfort. I know in the summertime, in the in the young people's area, we do have air conditioning. But up in the program rooms, we don't. And it gets ungodly hot up there. And we've we've canceled programming before because it's just been too hot for us to to have people come in there and have it be safe for them. So those things, those things are challenging.
Carol, can you talk more about what you'd like to do programmatically? What would you like to do to your vision for future programs? Think you'd like to would love to be able to do that right now? You can't do because of physical restraints in the space?
I'd like to have a dedicated storytime area. And and I'd love to have a place to do maybe a cooking program, like a kitchen. And I'd like to have glass walls so parents could see their kids. Let's say in a storytime, but you know, they wouldn't necessarily, or even just a regular program. And they'd be able to see their kids. You know, even though they maybe want to get a book for themselves or something. So something like that would be better. And obviously, as I mentioned, you know, heating and air conditioning are kind of an issue. But I would love to have like a dedicated program space just for young people's programs. I know in the past, pre-COVID, when we were doing in-person programs, I know Amy Relier, who is one of the young people's librarians beside myself, she would be doing program. She would be doing programs, but it was difficult because Carolyn Fagan would also be doing programs. And they'd have to just because of the placement of where materials were. Amy would have to, you know, come in and, you know, during Karen, one of Carolyn's programs to get things. Or if she wanted to put things away. I mean, we tried doing some programs in the reading room, but it was really not working because you had other patrons around. And so if you try to do a program with kids, you don't really, you don't necessarily want, well, you really don't want other adults just hanging out, you know, or coming over and and interrupting or, you know, saying, hey, you know, what are you doing? You know, just just for safety purposes. So, you know, it's it's challenging that way. But on the positive side, we have a really good staff. And, you know, with a lot of planning and. And you know, with a lot of planning and, you know, we, we try to make it work. But ideally, yeah, we'd have our own space. And I'm sure adult services would, would feel the same way.
Thank you.
Actually, I just thought of something. You know, that's would be really great if we had more outdoor space. You know, I mean, it's not realistic probably where we are right now, but I, I would love to have a reading garden or someplace to do some, just to do some nature programs with kids. That would be great.
I may have missed it. Did you mention the story walk that you did?
I didn't. I just removed it last week because the, the park's going to be closed soon. And, but yeah, we have a story walk in Prospect Park, which was the Story Monster Trouble. We got a grant to do that, and I think we'll be doing more of those. And I hope to be able to do something down by the waterfront whenever that's ready. So I had talked to Monica, the deputy mayor, about that. And so that's sort of on the back burner, but that's one of my, one of my future plans is to have something down there as well.
Anybody else?
The Lansingburg Library. Does Lansingburg Library also have children's, they also have children's programming as well, right?
Um, they, they
Do you coordinate with?
Yeah, we try to. They haven't had a huge turnout. It's, programming's kind of dwindled there in terms of participation. And I'm not sure what the reasons are for that. Some of it, I think, is there's been some things that have happened recently. Like I know St. Augustine's School closed a few years ago, and that seemed like that had an impact. But I know even the adult programs aren't, down there are not as busy as they used to be. So I, I don't know if it's just changing demographics or what.
I don't really know that much about the Lansingburg Library and need to find out more about it. But I was just thinking that would probably lend itself better to doing outdoor programs because it seems to have more space around it.
Um, yeah, well, that's true.
Anything else? Well, Carol, thank you for coming to tell us.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
It's always good to have an update, even if, if we've met with you before.
And not all of us have, so it's, it's great to hear from you.
All right. Well, also, if anybody has any questions or anything, you know where to find me.
That was my favorite place to be when I was a kid, the children's area. Got many, many, many books from there.
Well, you should, you should come see it now. It's, it's the same and, and somewhat different.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come in, in the evening and spending it with us.
All right. Well, thanks for having me again. All right.
Paul?
Thanks, Carol.
Next, the annual appeal. I haven't heard back from Mark as to where that, the letter that he was working on stands, But we need, what's the timeline on that, Paul?
Um, well, normally it goes to the printer right about now.
Okay.
So I, you know, we, we haven't, we haven't done anything at this point.
Okay. So I can follow up on that. I'm, I'm thinking that, well, I'm hoping that we go back to a one-page letter this year?
Yeah, I think that's more effective, really.
Okay. So I will follow, follow up on that.
Hi. Question. Who, who is writing the letter? Did you say Mark?
Mark. He, he's a, he was a former board member.
Okay.
And I had asked him what, whether he was willing to do it. And he had agreed, but somehow it didn't happen. So I'm checking with him on that to see whether he, he intends to do it or whether we need to make other arrangements.
And is it a designed piece or is it just a straight letter?
I think, I'm not sure of the difference, but I think a straight letter. I mean, does it have graphics or anything? It doesn't have graphics.
Okay. Okay. That was just my question.
Anything else on the, the appeal? Okay, next item is request to the foundation. Usually about this time of year, they ask, ask us to make a request for the funding we would like. And both Evelyn and I agree that although it may seem in talking with the president of the foundation that they would open requests for something other than financial support of our building, that we don't have the same feeling of receptivity to that idea from the rest of the board. So generally, it's a request for, for something specific. So last year, it was for the money to use to pay for the work to be done on this, on the SAM grant for the East Wall. Right?
Yes.
At East Wall. Because we have to outlay the, the money for payment and then get reimbursed. So we will get that money back eventually. And we agreed that when we do, then it would be used for other building projects. So generally, we've asked for 25,000. So, and we've found them agreeable to that. So I'm recommending that we ask for 25,000 once again. And propose that it be used for, for building projects.
Marie?
Yes?
Do you, have they given you any indication this time of what the community foundation is allowing them to offer the board, you know, the library this time in funding?
I don't believe that they know yet.
Did, would we entertain the thought that if we had a larger need for match and they have the available funds, um, available that we take? I don't, taking advantage sounds, is probably the, not the best way to say it, but, but to avail ourselves of those funds if it's more than 25K?
I certainly don't think that there would be a harm to ask. Perhaps we, you know, would ask for the 25,000 now and these are a little bit more uncertain. And then if we had a need and another, or a need for more than to ask them at that time when they might have a better idea on how they've done for the year. Is that what you had in mind or did you want to ask them for more now?
If, if I were doing it, I would first see how much was available and then base it on that and do it now, not later. Because one, they can always change your mind and B, they're, they're not really good at meeting. If they get together once a year, that's pretty darn good. And they usually do it once a year, no matter how, I want to take this off the record if you don't mind, but you know, some, they would like to meet more, but that hasn't happened. How's that person have, sounding a little bit more diplomatic. So I think if you have the opportunity to make the case, it's best to do it and get it done. And that takes some more stress out of our, you know, financial issues.
I remember that they're in a rebuilding phase of their own finances, that there were some depletions that happened in the past that depleted the principal somewhat.
That is true. That is why they're more likely to look at capital projects and anything operational. Plus, because the money was put into the community foundation pot, it, it changes the amount that's put into what I'll call the unrestricted fund. And several years ago, when the community foundation's assets tanked, basically, they were able to negotiate a loosening up of some of the monies that were in the restricted fund into the non-restricted fund. And that's where, when there is interest being made, that's where those funds go. Again, I have no idea how well there, the community foundations' assets have done this year and how much the foundation, the library foundation is able to even access. Because it has to be a certain percentage over the corpus. Like I said, the corpus amount was re-described some years ago. When they went from a certain amount being, and I, I, I could look up those numbers and I'm thinking offhand what they were, when it was turned from the restricted into the unrestricted account. And that was for 70, I remember that was $70,000 at that point. Some years have been better than others for monies in the community foundation. I have no idea what it is this year. It's been, as everything else, a very strange year for disbursements.
I don't know. And, and discussing it with them, they suggested or that they didn't know how much they had, but that we, we request similarly to what we requested in the past.
Okay. So they've given you some indication this, for this year?
Yes.
Okay.
That was, that was response. They don't, they didn't know how, how they were going to do.
Okay. From what you said, it sounded like you had not gone through that process yet. Well, it's going again through what we need. And if they're pretty much telling you to do the same amount, then. But it would be helpful knowing what they're offering or able to offer.
I don't think they know.
I forget when the foundation, the community foundation, not the library, the community foundation makes those reports out to, it is about this time of year, makes the reports out to all its members.
I haven't seen anything. As they have, the, the library board president is a board member for the foundation. So I haven't seen anything come through yet on that.
Wouldn't they know, wouldn't they not know until the end of the year? Don't they operate on a calendar year for that?
I don't quite remember when, when I've seen things in the past. I don't know. Evelyn, do you remember?
I think it's closer to fall, sometimes late fall than December. I don't know if they wait till year-end reports before they just, the, the community foundation. I don't think the community foundation waits until year-end reports to make their decision on disbursements. I think they do it a little sooner. Then again, things change. And, and Marie, I think what'll happen is the community foundation won't let every single member of the Troy Public Library Foundation know the numbers. They go through, the president of the community foundation then disperses the information to the rest of the board.
That's correct. And I haven't received, received anything yet.
Anything from Kevin?
But this is, you know, generally, this is the time that, that we do it, you know, like last year, I think this is the time that we, we make the decision and approve it so then it can go on to them. I think I had checked. When we did it last year.
I believe you're correct. So it's like kind of mid-fall, late fall-ish.
But you know, as I said, I, I, if we had an additional need, I, I would feel comfortable asking them for that at that time and see what they say. Any, any more comments? So I move that we request 25,000 to go toward matching or use for the, our building needs in conjunction with the grants that we have. Is there a second? Kirsten seconds? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously? Okay. Item six, the strategic plan. We had worked on the, the strategic plan with the board preceding the, the last one and had gotten quite far, but then a few things happened. We had a great deal of turnover with regarding, with regard to the board members and then after that COVID hit. So we did not finalize it. We have a draft version of a plan. And I spoke with Paul as to whether he felt that the staff, because it was done with, by a joint effort of the board and also by the staff, whether he felt the, the staff might be able to have the time to participate at this right now, knowing how busy they are or how difficult it is to do the staffing for the library. And he said he felt that it was something that they could work on, on the off week when they were not in the library. So I'd like to proceed with trying to get, move that forward, move that forward. So unless there are objections, I'd like to go ahead and, and try to schedule, first of all, distribute the draft and get people's reactions to it and then to finalize it. So hopefully, we can implement it for the next year. It's interesting that we have the experience of COVID to bring to bear on finalizing it. So some of the things might have changed a, a little bit as far as what we decide to move forward with. But does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. I, I will distribute that, make that available on, on our Dropbox. Then the next item is the new library requirements. Evelyn had mentioned at the last board meeting that there had been changes. There had been changes, um. That go into effect on January first. I put in to the Dropbox. A file called New York End Line Library Minimum Standards Comparison, I think. Which shows that. What has, has the, the increasing requirements. This is something that's been presented to the directors. By UHLS. Um, I spoke with Tim Burke about it. Um, he, he wasn't, he felt we shouldn't be too stressed by it. But it coincides well with the strategic plan, trying to get the strategic plan done because. Um, a long-term plan is needed to be completed. He feels that we need to be able to indicate that we meet these requirements by the time we do the annual report.
Which is February twenty-two.
February two thousand twenty-two, right? Uh, so we do have time to meet these requirements. One of the areas that, when I looked it over, I felt we were weak. Is in identifying the community need. Uh, Evelyn, you've seen it, right? I don't know what your opinion was. You seem to have some concerns when you mentioned it.
I, I mean about the requirements for that one in particular.
No, the requirements in general. That, you know, the increased requirements.
I think we have to be very clear about what we are and aren't meeting on all these pieces, all ten. I know we. I think it is possible still to articulate that we have, let me go back to this page, sorry. Um, that we have, so they certainly meeting community needs, you know, we look at what we did have done during, um. COVID, we look at what we provide, um. Our community, um. So I think we can articulate certain things, but there's a part of me that. Which is very personal in how I do research and look into things, which drives, I know many of you crazy. But, uh, how we define ascertaining community needs, um, I think I would be. More comfortable knowing if we had a way of stating how we were doing that. I, I guess, I think at the end result, we can say we have and we can enumerate those things. Certainly if you talk to staff, I know they're very good at saying, this is what we've done, here are the things and, um, this is how we. Managed to do this. I like having that other piece there that can say. This is what we did in order to determine what those needs were. Well, that was part of this. Um, certainly. There are certain things we, like we did tonight, which passing the budget makes me feel a lot more comfortable in view of this. And I'm thinking of something that Tim had said at the upper Hudson board meeting that I'm still kind of smiling back. But I just think it's making sure that we are clear in how we've done this. Um, so it's not just staff that knows, it's the board too.
And, um, Tim did indicate that they may well do a program on this, that. He, he seemed to feel that most of our, the libraries in the system were pretty close. In terms of meeting the requirements, but, um, that, you know, some of the libraries had indicated. Uh, an interest in having a program on it.
I, I think would be very helpful. I think it would clarify a lot of things. I think it sort of balances this all out. Um, and for a bit of background on this. Nyla and, um, the systems like UHLS were the ones that pushed the state. To redefine the minimum standards because they had been a little stale. They had not been changing a long time and it was the library world pushing that state to. Kind of redefine the minimum standards. To clarify the minimum standards. But I think again, having this community needs base, a strategic planning base is really important. And from the board's perspective. Even more so, and I think that's something we need to work on, you know, just if, if it's just to articulate how we've done it.
Paul, did you have any comments on? On the new standards and?
Yeah, I think what strikes me when I, um, when I read it over is exactly that. It's, it's kind of a review. And a clarification of, you know, the standards that have. Um, it's almost as if they were saying, yeah, we really mean this and you really need to do this. Kind of impression that I got when I was reading them over, but, uh, the clarification is good. I think we needed that.
You know, in some ways, I think that having these articulated in this piece. Helps us as we go through, you know, reviewing the strategic plan and ongoing reviews of all our policies and procedures. Which we had in place as a, as a need anyways, but I think it sort of helps us as we, you know, so there's a two-way street for this.
Anybody else have any comments or questions on this?
Besides, yeah, I actually, if you don't mind, um, besides Upper Hudson maybe doing some programming. Um, certainly I'd like to know their timeline for that. How, you know, do we have a process? Are going through this?
You mean to try and implement or to evaluate whether we are doing it or?
A little bit of everything from understanding to evaluating to implementing. To, you know, putting in processes if we have them.
Well, this, this was the introduction. For people. We, do you want, shall we discuss it more next time? At our next board met, meeting?
Might be a good idea.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, um. Director's report. Oh, we finally got to you.
Oh yeah, I'm down at the bottom here. No, I, and I have to apologize for getting that in the Dropbox a bit late, like today. I did the best I could. Um. As I mentioned in the, um, uh, finance committee meeting, uh, we're doing very well with the tax levy. And despite the figure that we have for the end of October, we also got another payment in November of thirty-four hundred or so. Uh, so we're actually, uh, for the year only about four thousand, um, six hundred, six hundred. Under the budgeted amount, so we're really very, very close on the, on the tax levy. I wanted to mention that, um, about eight staff members attended the Nyla virtual conference. And I gotta say, I, I was amazed at how well Nyla was able to put that together. Um. It, it actually, it actually worked. I was a little skeptical at the beginning, but. It, it actually works. The sessions were, were quite good in most cases. Um. You know, there was a, a, a heavy emphasis this year on, uh, the diversity, diversity issue. Um, but, um, the sessions were good and even, even the vendor. It was kind of interesting. You go into a vendor's booth and then you could actually click right away on the website and. Almost do a little more shopping. Um, but anyway, I thought, um, Nyla gets, um, a lot of credit for. Tackling that this year. I, I mentioned that, um. We were looking at, um, our statistics this year. Book circulation, uh, itself is down about forty-seven percent over what we would expect at this point. Um, you know, part of that is being closed for the number of months that we were. Um, part of it as people are still reluctant or have been reluctant to come out in public. The one bright spot is that, uh, eBooks and digital media have. Actually increased in use, uh, by about six percent so far this year. Um. So that's one way that, uh, we can, we can provide a service and that it is increasing. I think that was done in the, I wanna, I want to point out, um. The adult program, um. Programs that we've been doing. Uh, many of them very successfully. Um, we've had a good turnout on many of our programs. Um, I, I outlined this in the, um, in the director's report and, uh, encourage you to read it over. Um, when I asked Carolyn about, um, the adult programs, um. She also expressed, uh, concern and we, we've always had concern about the people that we're not reaching. Uh, the people who don't have good wifi connections, the people that don't have wifi at all. Um, and it's really, it's, it's hard to figure what to do, um. Because we just don't have a. A way to reach everybody at this point. Um, so that's, that's a concern that we have and that we continue to have, uh, in, in programming and. Going forward. I guess that's it. Is it questions?
Well, moving right along, um, although you may not be reaching everybody. I've certainly heard good feedback from a lot of people on, on the programs that they're. They have attended virtually.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting good, strong response, um, on what we are offering and of course we're continually exploring. New possibilities.
Um, I will just say also, thank you for the friends, for the support of the. Um, I'll call it the October surprise program. I thought that was great, having the author come in. And, and talk to us, uh. Especially just before that election. That was very, very wonderful. And all the programs are really great. I think I've missed three out of the ones you listed and that's it. Um, and, and just to, to. Kind of speak up to Sonny Paul said about Nyla, uh, I also, so diversity was big. Equity was a really big topic and privacy, um, was another very. Important topic throughout, um, a lot of the different programs. And I can bring this up also during new business, but. Privacy was another one of the things I certainly noticed during the Nyla conference. Of course, there was no stuff at any of the vendors. That was the sad part. I missed that and no candy.
No pens, no pads, no nothing.
No, no, no bags, no candy.
And it, it wasn't quite as exciting as, as when you're actually there with the crowds.
Yeah.
Running all over the place, trying to get, see as much as possible.
But I will say, I'm very happy that they recorded everything because there were at least three slots. I wanted to be at least two or three rooms at the same time. So this way I go, we'll get to chance to see it all.
The one big problem I found was that the days that we were inside, what, well, maybe you weren't Evelyn. Watching the, the conference were beautiful days that.
Well, as someone who's still. We're still putting things in the ground. Yeah. Oh, I was very perturbed by that and I had to stay inside. Uh, because my battery wouldn't have lasted.
Well, it would have been great weather to, uh, wander around Saratoga too, you know? That was not to be.
I know. Oh, well.
So, no other questions or comments on Paul's report? I need a minute to find my agenda again. So any observations or community feedback?
Um, I have to.
Okay.
You'll find them. Um, one, we, we talk about, I know hoopla a lot. I just want to say that it's being used by a lot of book groups to. Um, for instant borrows, uh, no waiting in line. And as its material delivery is still sometimes a little sluggish. Um, especially when it's something that a book group's going to be working with, it's come in very handy having it. Um, and the other thing is. So I have to say the I word. I, I'm enrolled in a training, it's not by a library group. Um, and it's about, of all things, racism and equity. But there was one great thing that thought they said. Um, they are using Zoom as a platform, highly visual, interactive workshop. I'm planning, uh, to join from a location with a stable wifi, both video and audio. And then he goes, as rural folks ourselves, we acknowledge the digital divide. And have often had to go park outside the public library to teach these classes. And I thought that was just so to the point of what we do. How, again, we serve our community, because how many times have people been outside of Lansingburg or. Um, outside the doors at the main, you know, using their devices, so. I thought I, I had to share that with everybody.
And we know that it's been particularly a problem for children. Doing remote learning. Um, in having the, the access and wifi access or the necessary hardware. Even for some of our families that are better off and better equipped, you know, when you have. Five kids. And they all have to be at school at the same time. Even the best equipped family does not necessarily have all that's need, you know, needed to be able to do that. Um. Okay, so old business, new business. Uh, I had a question for you on your old business. Are we still doing the reopening plan? Is that still active or?
The which?
The reopening plan?
Oh, yes. Um. Funny, I haven't actually, um, checked the, the, which phase is which, but, uh, we're still at the same. Spot that we were. Um, which may be step three. It looks like we're stalled pretty much in that. Phase at the moment.
And we're supposed to be reviewing that, right Evelyn?
Yes.
So was there any?
Sorry.
So we're still, we're still supposed to be reviewing it.
That is correct. We're supposed to do it once a month, um, at our board meeting and then every other week. Uh, just to see if there's any changes so far. There haven't been any changes. Um. As the new requirements are coming for the, um. What's it called? The Public Health Crisis Plan. I'm, I'm probably misnaming it. Um, I think that maybe then, uh, some of our reopening plan can be looked at. Not to change it so much as to kind of rephrase it maybe. So it becomes even more of a. Public, publicly usable document.
And in case our, our new board members aren't aware. Evelyn had agreed to be the person, board representative. Who reviewed it in between board meetings and. board representative who reviewed it in between board meetings and then, you know, helped us review it. At our board meeting as well.
Yep. Sorry, sorry, Mary.
I was just gonna say thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And, you know, check for changes out there in the environment or within the system or the state on, on what might affect some of this. I think there was one line which doesn't really change our reopening plan per se, but in the Upper Hudson Report, it's that it looks like delivery is now going to three days quarantine instead of four days.
I saw that in your report.
Flight improvement.
Reopening point. Can I just request something? And maybe this isn't the time, but is it possible to do a split screen so that we're all looking at what we're supposed to be looking at at the same time? I, I mean, I'm, I'm doing this on my iPad, so I can't go from one screen to another. I'm trying to follow the, the written stuff on my phone and that isn't working very well either. But I was just wondering if we could just do a split screen so we could put on screen what we're talking about. So we can see, we can all see the same thing at the same time. I'm just having a lot of trouble. Back and forth for this stuff that we're doing.
I would say I can't do it.
No, I
Because I can do it right now if you want.
But I, I, you know, there's really not much, there's nothing except the agenda that we're working from right now. So
Right, I know that. But we've gone through a lot of yeah, it's been hard to find on my
There is a lot of stuff that we seem to have on our agendas. But so Joy, is that something that you could do in the future?
You're muted now, Joy.
Sorry. Sure. I, I will do my best. Yes.
That'd be great.
Is this what you mean, Jerry?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Joy.
Yep.
Okay. So you'll be continuing to, to monitor the reo, quote reopening plan, right Evelyn?
Oh, absolutely. Fun.
And another item that's old business is the, the committee and memberships and, and chairmanships. I've twisted Jerry's arm by telling her that the administration committee just is required to meet twice a year. And she's agreed to chair that going forward. And Brianna and I are in brainstorming how she might best serve in addition to being a board member. So we haven't, we will be meeting on that and getting back to you on that. Does anyone else want to change what committees are on or? I know Jerry has, has joined the finance committee. I'm not, Brianna sort of checking out things, committees that she might want want to join. Any, any other changes?
We talked about an outreach committee.
A what committee?
Outreach.
Marketing, you mean marketing?
No, not market outreach, you know. At least to me, there is a difference between marketing and outreach. But reaching out to the community, reaching out to other groups, reaching out which are things we do do, but again, just kind of straightening that up a bit, strengthening it, sorry.
I believe that would fall under the conversations that Marie and I are having.
One of my concerns is that we're such a small board that it's hard to man all, all the committees.
Staff, not me.
Thank you, Jerry. And, you know, I'm not kidding when, when I say that I had to twist Jerry's arm.
Ouch, still hurts.
So I, I think we have to be judicious and not trying to stretch ourselves too thin. Many people have have multiple positions or of responsibility that they have. So we can talk about that some more, but that is my concern. Evelyn, you said you had some new business?
Two more things. One is, I said, I mentioned this again during our new business. We may want to look at our privacy policy. And, you know, I, you and I quickly emailed each other during the Nyla conference at one point. The same thought from one of the speakers, but that's something I think we should be looking into. And two, I'll throw this in now before I forget. Just for future reference, for anyone who's putting in or wanting to share material through the Dropbox, I'd like to make the suggestion of these. I was thinking of Jerry's problems with accessing the material, some material last month. And I had some problems accessing that same material that we go through, Joy, to put the material in the Dropbox and certainly to give us, well, the link to that material. I think it might solve some of those access problems.
Well, I think, you know, obviously it doesn't work for me to try and tell people where things are. But if I can just say, hey, they're in the Dropbox and not have to provide a link, it shouldn't be a problem. I wa, I wasn't trying to, I was just trying to let focus people's attention on that that was there and that that was something that people who were going to be participating in the special finance committee should be aware of as material that was useful for preparation. I didn't, you know, I hadn't placed it there. But people had asked that they provided with the link in the past, so that's why I did that.
And I think that's, you know, valuable help, but it just makes life easier. Maybe if Joy's doing that. Because she somehow manages to do that direct link without having to sign in or, or, you know, follow up with its computer. It's just a thought. It's just a suggestion. It's not just for you. It's for anybody who's going to put in material kind of in an ongoing basis from here on out.
Well, I, I can do it and just not provide a link. Because sometimes it works for me to do so and sometimes it doesn't. I'll just state, you know, I'll just identify that there's material there that people should focus on or, you know, tend to going forward and not, not put in a link that might cause people a problem.
Well, any links are appreciated because I don't know how to get, getting in and out of these things is not, is not my strong point. And I, I often get lost and get myself in trouble. So the more links, the more easy ways to get in, the better. As far as I'm concerned.
Well, that easy way turned out not to be easy, though.
Yeah, I know. It, yeah. Anyway. I'm learning a lot.
Anything else? Any other? Okay, is there any public comment? Freda?
I am commenting on behalf of the Friends of the Troy Public Library. And catching you up on what we've been doing and the status of things. And I'll do it quickly. First off, some of you, you may all be aware that before COVID, the librarians got training on helping people use the library to complete the census and then COVID happened. And then when the library reopened again, the Friends worked with the librarians, specifically Stephanie and Dale. And we provided incentives by way of a gift card to stewards for people who use the library to fill out the census. And it was very, as it turns out, there were something like fifteen days or less in which this program was actually in place before the census was summarily turned off. But we did get some response, not great. We don't know how many numbers we increased the census for Troy by. But my joke is that if Troy manages to get over fifty thousand population, we can say that the library was responsible for fifty thousand and ten. So that's the, that happened between, you know, October, something October one and October fifteenth. Evelyn mentioned the fact that we co-sponsored with the library a talk by Devlin Barrett. And I just wanted to give you a little background on how that happened. The Friends of the Troy Public Library got a sizable donation from Mr. Barrett. And I noticed that he was in Arlington, Virginia. And I said, I emailed him and said, how come you're contributing to the Friends of the Troy Public Library? And he said that he grew up in Troy down the block from the library and had all these warm memories of hanging out in the, in the young people's section. And by the way, he had just completed this book on the October surprise, which was the role of the FBI in the two thousand sixteen election. And so I, since we didn't have, the Friends didn't have the capability, we asked him if he would make a presentation and, you know. And since we didn't have the capability, we worked with Carolyn, who set up a Zoom conference. And it was terrific. He was terrific. And it was also hilarious, you know, two guys that he went to high school with were on the call and, and his sister, but it was extremely personable. It's a very interesting book. And we were very glad to have a part of making that possible. The other thing that's happened, as you know, is that a lot of the revenue for the Friends of the Troy Public Library comes from the sale of used books. And our only opportunity, mostly is the book seller in the Lansingburg Library. And you know how limited how that the Lansingburg Library is hardly open. So we are now staffing the book seller from ten to two, which is the library hours on Saturday. We have been successful in getting the advertiser to say that the book seller is open. And so people are beginning to come in and we're going to experiment with doing Thursday evening hour, like four to six. But, you know, this is really, you know, has cut into our revenue substantially because we can't sell books. In the past, for the new board members, we did a whole bunch of pop-up sales at the farmer's market in the summertime with the music hall and their few free concerts. We, our pop-up book sales outside of the book seller was a huge source of income for us. And in that case, we didn't, we didn't price the books. We asked for contributions and we made much more asking for contributions than we ever did pricing the books. Our books are priced at a dollar adult books and twenty-five cents for kids' books. The other thing you will see right now that you will have noticed that up to about a week ago, the pots in front of the main library have been the most luscious we've ever had for many, many a season. And now they're empty and we're going to be replacing them with winter stuff. And just today, a team of friends was in Lansingburg weeding the landscaping in front of the library and trimming the hedges in front of the library. So that's what we've been doing. We, so any questions about what the Friends are up to or any requests from us that you would like us to pay attention to?
I had a question, Bob Doherty. Was the presentation from the author in Virginia taped?
I don't know. I, I don't know. I wanted it to be taped so Carolyn would know that answer. Carolyn would know that answer whether it was taped or not. And I had wanted it to be taped, but I didn't make that request. Yeah.
Did Joy set it up?
I thought, Joy's not on the phone on the
I'm here. I'm here.
Did you set it up, Joy, the, the Devlin Barrett thing or did Carolyn?
I did not set it up. Carolyn set it up.
Yeah, so Carolyn Fagan set it up. So Carolyn would know.
If it's true, okay. Because sometimes I record it. It would be fascinating.
Yeah. Oh, the other thing that's happening, you all should pay attention, is November twenty-second is I Love the Library Day with Market Block Books. And at the I Love the Library Day, Market Block Books contributes twenty percent of all its sales to the library. Plus, the librarians create a wish list and people have the opportunity to buy off the wish list. So for concern about how, what happened to the materials budget, as the librarians come up with their wish list, then some customers of the books of Market Block Books or patrons of the library choose to buy the books that the library wants and then contribute it to the library. And so and so that's happening November twenty-second. If you plan to buy holiday books, it's a Sunday. Buy them then.
And you're having an annual meeting, aren't you?
No, we're having a board meeting next Tuesday. It's just a board meeting.
Okay.
And that'll be a Zoom call. So we've sent out notices, but if any of you would like to sit in on our board meeting, just notify me and I will add you to it. Did, Marie, did you get the connection for the Zoom?
I did. Thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Freda, for all that you and the Friends do. It really is a huge help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's great. Do you know the times that the store is open on Sunday, the twenty-second?
It's eleven to three, I think.
Eleven to three. Thank you.
And what, what about the Victorian stroll? Are you, do you know whether they're going ahead with that? And are you going to participate if they are?
We have no plans to do it. One of the things we're not doing this year, which we normally do, is we wrap books at Market Block Books for the holidays. And we decided for safety reasons that we're not, we're not wrapping books at Market Block Books this year. We would do it for tips, you know. And so we're concerned about the exposure of our volunteers to the more general public than, than we normally have. At the book cellar, we, you know, we have a Plexiglas barrier, just like the library does. So we polled the volunteers who usually wrap books and there wasn't sufficient interest in doing it this year. So that's another, you know, as we think about how our income is being constrained. That's another way that our income is being constrained.
Well, and, and that affects our, our revenue as well because you, you do support various projects such as the painting of the, of the children's room and so
The lights in the stacks. So what we've done is, and Paul's still on the, on the call, we have asked for a wish list that we can discuss prior to our board meeting on Tuesday. So if, if we get a, a wish list now of projects that the library and the trustees are interested in our underwriting, we would like to know that. And we would like to have that information prior to next Tuesday at five o'clock. And so at that meeting, we will make a decision about what our next underwriting project's going to be.
Anything else? Okay. I actually can't see this because I have both things on my screen right now. It's not big enough. Okay, the date and time of the next board meeting is December 8th. Is that correct, Joy? Okay. So is everybody agreeable to adjourning?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.